Dickinson City Commission meeting of February 1st, 2016. The record should show that we have four commissioners present. We will first take a look at the order of business. Any changes there?
Yes, President Jackson, I would like to recommend we move Item 7A up to 6B and just move the others down one.
Okay. Anything else? If not, look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Remove second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Impose the motion carries. That will look at the consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda that anybody would like to discuss? Not will look for motion.
Make the motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. We will move to the regular agenda. We do have one timetable agenda at 5:00, but we will move to the regular agenda. And Mr. Kessel, we have a board of adjustment appointment to look at.
Thank you, President Jackson. Mr. Corey Schweitzer has indicated an interest in being on the Board of Adjustments. Mr. Schweitzer brings a great deal of talent and experience with him that I think would fit very well on the Board of Adjustments. He used to be a city employee, now works as an engineering tech in the community. And because of that work, it would lend itself very well to the Board of Adjustments. It's our recommendation and mine that we appoint Mr. Corey Schweitzer to the Board of Adjustments. And by the way, if the City Commission deems fit to do so, that will round out membership on the Board of Adjustments.
And that is a five-person board? Mr. Kessel?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kessel? Any comments? If not, then we need a motion.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Not will vote Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That motion carries. Ms. Goss, you're going to present the lease reimbursement to us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. This is a request to approve the payoff of property Schedule Number 6 of the Master Tech exempt lease with U.S. Bank. The city entered into a lease and escrow agreement with U.S. Bank back in 2014, and in the process of that lease getting set up, the city paid the vendor directly for that equipment, which was a roll-off truck. So we have been making monthly payments on the lease, and the money is still in escrow. Approval would pay off that lease with the escrow fund and return the excess to the city. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions for Ms. Goss on this item? Then we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion about this lease reimbursement? Not will vote Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Reports, I understand Ms. Goss is going to address the South Heart agreement?
That's correct. In 2014, the city entered into a joint exercise of powers agreement for wastewater with the city of South Heart. At the time, it was for an agreed-upon use of 83 gallons per minute or 727 EDU, which was an overestimated amount by South Heart. They are now connected and ready to use the system, but have approached us about renegotiating the contract to go down to the actual use that they have. So the proposed revisions are to change the use to their actual use, which is 228 hookups, and we would not have any guaranteed use further than that. And then they would also pay a usage rate on top of that. And because of the lower amount, the city will be short on South Heart's portion of debt service because they're not doing any overpayment. So part of the agreement is that South Heart would work with the city in attempting to obtain a grant to cover that portion of the debt service. So we're continuing to work on this and are hopeful to bring it to the next commission meeting for approval.
Okay, I would presume if we're eliminating the guarantee, that there also would not be any reservation?
That's correct.
For South Heart?
That's correct. And the way that it would work is, right, their current hookups is 228 EDU. They would be, or 228 hookups. We would require them to present a monthly accounting of how many hookups they have, and they would have to, any new hookups would have to pay our sewer hookup, or sewer access charge as a regular resident would pay as well. So we would have that additional fee.
Any questions for Ms. Goss on that item?
What's the difference in the gap? Or how much of a grant would they be looking at?
It's over a million dollars is what it was estimated to be based on their usage compared to the total usage.
Okay, so you'll be bringing the actual revised agreement to us at a future meeting?
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else? All right, let's see. Mr. Kessel, you have an item under reports.
I do, thank you, President. President Jackson, Commissioner, I do have an item. The reforecasted revenue budget with the CIP. We will be bringing this, I've committed to President Jackson that I'll be bringing this document to the City Commission at the next February 15th, excuse me, February 16th City Commission meeting. Just a reminder that we do meet on Tuesday, the 16th, rather than Monday, the 15th, for our next City Commission meeting. In that document, we will have completed the revenue forecast for any revenue item over $200,000. We also will have prioritized the capital improvements program for 2016, and we'll be making a recommendation with regard to that document as well. We wanted to present those together so that it's comprehensive and that you can see the impacts of the revenue forecast on the CIP. We most likely will not have a expense reforecast. I anticipate that that is going to be necessary based on the early indications of revenue reforecasting, but I doubt we'll have that prepared for the February 15th meeting. But we will certainly bring that to you at an ensuing City Commission meeting. I do have one other item I'd like to mention, but I would like to make sure that I answer any questions that could arise from this topic specifically.
The only thing I would say concerning the budget is, you know, number one, it's good we're doing this early rather than halfway through the year, but I don't think we should delay much on the expense side because the longer we get into the year, it will be harder to make those adjustments.
My hope was to bring the expense side to you at the first meeting in March. So if not that, at least the second meeting. So I don't want to go beyond the first quarter. I share your concern.
Anybody else? Anything? Go ahead, Mr. Kessel.
My next item is, for the last two-plus years, we've had KLJ BR, City Engineer, and they've appointed Mr. Kubis as that City Engineer. We also had Mark Millstone for the majority of that contract as well. Both have served us ably. We're very glad to have had those services. That contract ends on February 5th. So that's our final day. I am very pleased to announce that Mr. Kubis has decided to join the city of Dickinson. His first official day will be then February 8th, I guess, Monday, February 8th. He's worked well with our team for over two years, so we're hoping that means that the training period will be shorter now that when he becomes a city employee. We'll see about that. He still will have the probationary period, so we'll have 90 days to evaluate. But we're very, very excited to have Mr. Kubis join us, and I think I can speak on behalf of the leadership team in welcoming Mr. Kubis and saying, "Thank you for making a smart decision." Thank you. That concludes my reports this evening.
Okay. Any questions from Commissioners? The next couple of items on our agenda are KLJ task orders, and I'll be abstaining from those votes, so I'm going to ask Vice President Steiner to handle those two items on our agenda.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Tab 6, Engineering. KLJ Task Order to Create Platte for City Property at 21st and 30th. I see it's supposed to be Assistant City Engineer Marschek, but are you going to be taking that, Mr. Kubis?
I think Mr. Zurov will handle both of these, next two items.
Okay, President Jackson and Commissioner, this first task order is to create the city plat for city property at 21st and 30th Street. This task order would be in agreement with KLJ to perform plating services associated with the city property located on 21st Street and just east of 30th Avenue on west of the new middle school location. This would include using existing survey information to create the plat, document depicting right-of-way and easements, and coordinating with the city planning and zoning, and of course preparation of the plat location. This task order would include preliminary and final plat at a 3.2 multiplier and is estimated to be $3,500. The city engineer and staff recommends approval.
Any questions from Commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Decker, second by Commissioner Oatmans. We'll vote, Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson abstains. Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is a KLJ Task Order Number W-12, 2016 Water Main Replacement. This is a West Vallard city maintenance project. This task order is for the design bidding and construction observation of approximately 1,200 feet of 8-inch water main. This project is on West Vallard from College to State Avenue and will replace the 6-inch, as I said, with the, with 8-inch PVC. The total cost of the compensation for services is $110,000. That includes preliminary design, final design, bidding and negotiation, and construction observation phase. This project was on our capital project. We haven't prioritized it specifically as far as construction, but I think it's agreed by staff that we follow with design on this project.
Okay, any questions from Commissioners?
That state, this project stayed within the budget on the CIP?
Yes. It, the budget of the CIP, it was approved for the 2016 capital for the project.
Do we know what that was approved for?
I think it was $760,000.
The whole project? Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve. Mr. Oatmans, second by Mr. Decker. Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
President Jackson abstains. Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner Carson.
Okay, Mr. Steiner, thank you. We have a couple of more task orders with Apex Engineering. Mr. Kubis, you're going to take those?
I will. Thank you, President Jackson, Commissioners. The next item is Item C, the Apex Task Order Number 20 for On-Call Plan Review Services. And this task order would continue the city's arrangement with Apex Engineering Group to provide on-call plan review services. These services are initiated upon request of the city staff to assist in providing quality assurance reviews on plans and reports submitted to the city. Those would include stormwater management plans, FEMA submittals, and general civil construction plans. There is no identified dollar amount other than the fact that it's anticipated that no single review would exceed $30,000. This is a budgeted amount, but we don't initiate Apex Engineering on these types of plan reviews until we have a deposit from the developer, so it's kind of a money-in, money-out transfer on this task order for on-call plan review services. Staff has reviewed the agreement and recommend approval.
Okay, and I expect, Mr. Kubis, that this item will probably be used very little in comparison to a couple of years ago, I would expect.
I would expect, but just recently, we have got a stormwater management plan in from a developer, so.
Sure.
There will be a need for this type of engineering expertise on the plan reviews.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Kubis? If not, we'll look for a motion on Item 6B.
Prove, prove. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any more discussion? If not, we'll vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. Go ahead, Mr. Kubis.
The next item is under Apex Task Order Number 21 for Planning and Modeling Services. Again, this would continue our arrangement with Apex to provide the planning and modeling services for sanitary sewer services, mostly related to the incorporation of new developments into the city. These services include tasks relating to existing city infrastructure on a case-by-case basis as requested by city staff. Typically, these types of studies would produce flow projections, capacity evaluations, improvement planning and coordination, and regulatory compliance. The task order compensates service at a 3.0 multiplier, not to exceed $250,000. City staff recommends approval. Again, I'd mentioned, most of these tasks that are initiated by city staff are to review developments, and again, the developers reimbursing the city for those. There have been times in the past where we've initiated Apex to do some of these sewer studies for the city system, not related to a development, but the majority is for development projects. So again, we could anticipate the number of these reviews to be fewer than in years past.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kubis. Any questions on this task order?
Make a motion to approve.
No second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We'll vote, Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries.
And the last item I have, Item E, is for North Dakota DOT Retro Reflectivity Project that they're initiating on I-94, Highway 22, and on the Business Loop through town. This is consideration to approve a cost participation and maintenance agreement. The project that they're planning will upgrade the retro reflectivity of signs in and around the Dickinson area, and in fact, it's on a statewide basis. For those wondering, retro reflectivity is the ability of the sign to reflect your headlights back towards the vehicle so you can see them at night. If you've ever seen a sign that looks fine in the daytime and looks like it's covered with mud at night or is really dirty, that's just because the retro reflectivity isn't there. The city has no cost share for all the signs on Highway 22 or on I-94, but we do have a 5% cost share of the signs on the Business Loop. That would be on the regional system. Our share of that 5%, or our 5% share would be estimated at $1,385. The project is anticipated to be bid in March through the DOT, and we've reviewed the agreement, and we would recommend approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kubis. Any questions concerning this agreement with the DOT?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion at all? Not will vote, Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. With that, we'll move to Public Works, and Mr. Zurov, looks like you have one more item.
Yes, thank you, President Jackson. The next item is a, actually, it's a memorandum of understanding, a water pipeline and a sewer pipeline easement from the state of North Dakota. These easements in the MOU are for the construction of the water and sewer mains from 15th Street up to the new middle school. The sewer and water pipeline easements and the temporary easement are for a total fee of $2,525, and then there is the water and sewer pipeline easement. Discussion with City Attorney Gugos, I think we need three different motions on this to approve the MOU, the water pipeline, and the sewer pipeline.
That's correct.
Okay, we need a motion on the MOU, and then?
The sewer pipeline easement and the water pipeline.
Two different easements, okay.
Move to approve.
Which one?
I'll vote, President. We'll go with the water.
Okay. We're approving the water easement. We have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions on the water easement? If not, we'll vote, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That motion carries. Who would like to do the sewer easement?
I would. Make a motion to approve the sewer.
I'll do it second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, Mr. Decker, Mr. Oatmans, Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That motion carries. And now we need a motion on the memorandum of understanding.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the MOU? Mr. Oatmans.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That motion carries. I see Mrs. Fear in the audience. We're going to be a little bit early tonight. I'm going to do one more thing here, and if you guys are ready in a couple of minutes, we'll take you a little bit early, if that's okay. I'm going to ask if there's anything under Commissioner Items before we go to our 5:00 item. I wanted to bring up one thing. Had a chance to sit with Mr. Kessel and Mr. Hirschfield the other day, talking about our equalization meeting, which is still a couple of months away. But we talked about the fact that maybe this year it would be good for Mr. Hirschfield to do a presentation to the City Commission some evening, get that presentation on Channel 19, and just, just look at it as an educational thing. Where are we heading? What's likely going to happen at equalization? And maybe it will make that equalization meeting a little more efficient, maybe get some information out to folks. So we're going to do that maybe in a month or so here, something like that?
Normally, when we do things of this nature, we try to piggyback them on a City Commission day. So my suggestion would be either we meet a couple hours in advance of the City Commission meeting, or immediately after a City Commission meeting. And I'm not sure if any of you have availability in, you know, for the second meeting in February. We'd like some time to put that together, so maybe the first meeting in March would be a better time.
I think we want to take the time to do it well, and if, you know, if we get a meeting like this meeting tonight, that is obviously a short meeting, I don't know why we can't do it right during the regular meeting.
Okay.
You know, just as an educational thing.
Okay. We'll just put it on as a timetable agenda item, and then?
Sure.
We'll plan to do that then, March 7th, which is, I believe, our first meeting in March.
Okay. Commissioners have anything else they want to bring up? Okay. With that, we'll introduce Chris Fear to talk about Giving Hearts Day. And it looks like you have some folks with you.
I do. Well, thank you, Commissioners, Mayor Jackson, for having us here. We are handing out some information to you. Thank you for taking time to hear about Giving Hearts Day and the opportunity that brings to the nonprofits here that serve our community in southwest North Dakota. First, I would like to present the mayor with his very own Giving Hearts Day shirt.
I hope it's really big.
Well, I think it looks like it was big.
Thank you very much.
So Giving Hearts Day is a 24-hour online fundraising, excuse me, fundraising event. It involves more than 300 charities in North Dakota and western Minnesota. It was started back in 2008 by the Impact Foundation in Fargo as a way for donors to efficiently give to many charities at one time and to help charities to work together on a joint fundraiser. The Dickinson area was included in Giving Hearts Day for the first time three years ago. Each charitable nonprofit involved needs to raise a minimum of $4,000 for our donors to match. Gifts of $10 or more will be matched up to that $4,000 level or more, depending on how much the nonprofit has managed to raise in advance. But that's not all. As charitable, we as charitable nonprofits still need to get the word out about Giving Hearts Day. We have worked together for three years now. Our collaborative group is called Pledge From the Edge. And we pool our resources and we share our talents. This is yet another example of just another sector in southwest North Dakota that works together for the good of the communities in our region. So here's how Giving Hearts Day works. On Thursday, February 11th, you go on the Internet to impactgiveback.org, where you will find more than 300 charities listed. You may search for your favorites by name. You can search by zip code. You can search by region, or you can scroll through that entire list of more than 300, which is kind of fun if you have the time. You can provide food for the hungry, care to our elderly, give kids a caring mentor, support spiritual growth, connect youth with the great outdoors. You could deliver 24-hour health care and more. When you find a charity to love, it's just like online shopping, which is why I like it. You indicate the amount you wish to donate to each charity, and you continue until you're done. Then you just check out by paying with your credit card. You receive an acknowledgement practically immediately, and your gift lands in the bank account of your chosen charities or charities. It's really, it's really simple. Last year, the 11 members of the collaborative raised combined $123,576, which is amazing, in just 24 hours. So keep in mind that each charitable nonprofit got its own amount of money, and then we just added the totals together to see what that would be. So this year, we have 13 members in our group. The Amen Food Pantry, Assumption Abbey, Badlands Choice Clinic, Badlands Ministries, Best Friends Mentoring Program, the Dickinson Backpack Program, Dickinson Catholic Schools, Home on the Range, House of Manna, North Dakota Hands and Voices, the Sacred Heart Benedictine Foundation, the Richardson Healthcare Foundation, and St. Luke's Home. All those charities you're all familiar with. You probably all donate to them already, and you know that they're all doing good work in our communities. So all of us here today that are wearing our red shirts represent those charitable nonprofits. There are some really neat ways that everyone can be part of Giving Hearts Day. First, you can vote for your favorite local charitable nonprofit right next door at Gate City Bank. One nonprofit will be drawn for a $5,000 gift from Gate City. That's going on at the Gate Cities all over North Dakota. There's no limit on the number of times you can vote. You can vote many times in one day and every day until the cutoff, but you need to go into the lobby in order to vote. Another way is to vote for our video, the Pledge From the Edge video. There are three cash prizes for the ones that get the most votes. Here's the site, www.visionbanks.com/DidYouKnow/GivingHeartsASP. All the videos are listed there. And I've watched all of them through the years. There's some really cute ones. You'll really enjoy that. Another way is to go to impactgiveback.org on February 11th to find some charities to love. If you don't have Internet or computer access, don't worry. We have all worked together here to help you. We have a cyber café all day at the West River Community Center. We have a cyber cafe all day at the West River Community Center. You can stop by the table, get some information, talk to the nonprofits who are there, you can use a computer there, and donate there, and get some treats. And finally, you city commissioners can proclaim February 11th, 2016, as Giving Hearts Day in Dickinson. I would be happy to answer any questions, as would anyone here of our group, and I would like to thank you for your time.
Well, and thank you, all of you, for being here. I think this really is a great thing. Now, I expect we have a number of questions. I'm gonna ask a couple. First of all, repeat the website.
On the postcard. Many of you will be getting these in your mailboxes this week from us.
And it is true that if one of us wants to give, we can pick one charity, we can pick 10 charities, whatever we would like to do.
Yes.
And if I understand things right, most of the charities, there is a matching grant for any money that we would give.
Right. Each charity was required to raise a minimum of $4,000.
Okay.
I heard today that the Dickinson Catholic Schools raised $25,000 as their match.
So all the charities listed will have a match?
Every single charity in order to participate needs to raise that match. So, it's a minimum of $4,000. Many of us have raised more, but you have to do that minimum. So your gift would be matched up to whatever that amount is that that charity raised for their match. It's an incentive for, it's an incentive for donors. It's kind of fun, isn't it, just to think that if you donate $10, the charity gets 20? I mean, that's kind of fun. Or, Carson, in your case, if you donate 500, the charity would get 1,000.
He brought tears to his eyes.
I see that.
Other questions?
I do have a couple. First, you mentioned the cyber cafe for those people who don't have the opportunity to maybe log on at home and take care of that. I would also say that our Dickinson Public Library has over 30 public-use computers. They could use the same thing there, just to encourage as much giving as possible. I would also like you to repeat a web address, but it was the one related to the video. It was much longer than the Impact Give Back one.
It's a long one, yeah, and if you're on my email list and some of these people's email list, you should be getting that in your email, but I'll repeat it so that you have it. It's www.visionbanks.com. It is sponsored by Vision Banks. That's why, it's visionbanks.com/DidYouKnow/GivingHeartsASP. And the videos are listed, and some of them, like ours says Pledge From the Edge. Some of them are listed just by the name of the organization. We did one together, so you can't just go vote for St. Luke's or Best Friends, you vote for Pledge From the Edge. I think they'll really enjoy it. Sister Renee did it again for the second year for us. It's really cute. They'll really enjoy going to that, seeing that. Plus, while you're there, take a look at the other videos. They're fun. Oh, yes, this is also on our Facebook page. Where's Kristen? Giving Hearts, isn't Giving Hearts southwestern?
Yes, Giving Hearts Day southwestern.
Yeah, Giving Hearts Day southwestern North Dakota. So go to Facebook and type in Giving Hearts Day southwestern North Dakota. If you get that far, you'll get Giving Hearts Day, you'll get it.
I have one final question. I am familiar with all of these charities, glad to have them all providing services in our area, except one. The North Dakota Hands and Voices, Brock, could you talk about that a little bit?
That's a statewide organization. My understanding is that they have, what do you say, districts or areas, so they have people in each area. So that's why they're included in our collaborative this year. And I understand that that has to do with hearing impaired children. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so, and the person who is in charge of that locally is Jennifer Gonzer. She's not here this evening, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions?
I'm hoping that you will all be in the picture with all of us while the mayor's signing the proclamation.
Okay. First, I, and we do have a proclamation here that I'll read, but I will ask if there are any commissioners who would be objecting to doing this proclamation. And I dare anyone of you.
I was gonna say, we're gonna gang up.
Okay. I will go ahead and read this. This is a proclamation in observance of Giving Hearts Day in Dickinson, North Dakota, whereas, in 2008, Giving Hearts Day was created by the Dakota Medical Foundation and the Impact Foundation as the first one-day virtual fundraising event of its kind in the region. And whereas, the goals of Giving Hearts Day are to raise awareness of the charitable nonprofit sector and its organizations in North Dakota and western Minnesota, to assist the organizations in better telling their mission stories, to promote online giving, and to provide donors the opportunity to multiply the results of their giving. And whereas, this 24-hour online fundraising event is dedicated to inspiring online donations for charities at impactgiveback.org. And whereas, Giving Hearts Day is powerful because it inspires so many to give for the first time, or to contribute to newly discovered charities. And whereas, the charitable nonprofit sector provides much-needed services that improve the quality of life for so many in our community. And whereas, the charitable nonprofit sector supports individuals and families with quality programs, materials, and funds that promote and encourage self-sufficiency. And whereas, all of the above-listed benefits serve to strengthen the fiber of our community and make it richer for all residents. And whereas, in order to provide these benefits, charities who provide these services need ongoing funds in order to provide long-term, sustainable services our residents in need. And whereas, these charities have demonstrated a need for collaboration and resources, and have joined together for this one-day online fundraiser. Now, therefore, I, Gene Jackson, President of the City Commission of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby declare February 11th, 2016, as Giving Hearts Day in Dickinson, North Dakota, and call upon public officials, business and community leaders, and educators, and encourage all Dickinson citizens to observe this day with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs, in order to, number one, recognize the charitable nonprofit sector and their staffs and volunteers who provide essential services that improve the quality of life for our citizens. Number two, acknowledge that the charitable nonprofit sector is beneficial in Dickinson and southwest North Dakota because it improves life outcomes and strengthens our community. Number three, promote the supportive charitable nonprofit sector that equips our citizens with the tools needed to lead safe, healthy, and productive lives. And number four, support Giving Hearts Day and take action by volunteering or making financial donations to local charities in Dickinson in southwest North Dakota. So, I will sign this. How do you wanna do this?
I was going to ask you, I have more experience.
Who's your photographer?
Is Mark here? Oh, yep, he's here. Our photographer is here.
Would all of you like to stand?
Yeah.
Behind us?
Does that work, Mark?
Would that work?
Yes.
Be careful of Mr. Steiner, he pushes his chair out once in a while, he could lose a toe.
You come be by me.
I will, I will.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, everybody.
Now, you all have to go back out and sit out there now. Can't stay up here. Suzie, you have to go back out there. Okay. Again, thank you all for being here, and seriously, this is a, it's a great event for Dickinson and southwest North Dakota. One more time, the, the website is, thank you, Carson, impactgiveback.org. Impactgiveback.org. And I suppose if you Googled "North Dakota Giving Hearts," you'd probably get there, I expect. Okay. Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I will ask if there is anyone from the public who has anything they'd like to bring to the commission tonight? Anybody from the public? If not, we'll look for a motion to adjourn. We're moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. We adjourn.